Good evening. This is Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. That lovely eighteenth banner Celtics T-shirt you decided to wear tonight. Or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer will be broadcast and captured. And recorded forever ever and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members. Are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
For the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-four P M. Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board, which is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of urgency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. To have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and emotions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your cooperation and understanding. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? Oh, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Correction, penetrating insight?
I hope you all read them. I sent them in a timely manner.
As you always do.
Several minutes ago.
Being no discussion, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Mister Jay, is there any administrative stuff in the mailbox other than notices from our surrounding towns? Showing us how.
Well, first, I would like to note that if you continue to call the meeting to order at exactly seven thirty-four. And everybody in votes in favor of the minutes. The first half of my minutes don't have to change.
We'll keep that in mind.
We'll do our very best for you.
We had nothing in the email box and. We had a pile of stuff in the mailbox, but as I was mentioning previously, it's all correspondence from our neighbors. And I think we're supposed to be sending the same amount out that they sent in.
So we need. We have stuff that is public hearing worthy. Yes.
Need to do more of that.
There's more than that.
Right. It's really just, it's not every meeting that we have. It's just every meeting that we have that involves. The interest of another town.
Potentially.
Correct.
We get a lot of stuff from Clinton.
Oh, Clinton sends us stuff all the time. Yeah.
They get from Hudson, Northborough, yeah, Bolton.
Well, they have paid staff.
Some of them are saving the planet and sending postcards.
So just killing little trees.
You gotta give a postal work or something to do.
That's true.
If they email.
Like things are kind of quiet lately. What's going on with that?
What's quiet?
Our activities. Maybe not much construction going on, although we did assign out two A and R student lot too long ago, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. But for commercial construction.
Kind of dead.
Yeah, absolutely.
High-end residential is booming as are apartment villages.
Think we were talking about today, the apartment, the big apartment complexes, I think are getting finished. I don't think that many new ones being initiated.
We're just sent in a bid for one in Everett yesterday.
Oh, is that right?
You're gonna find the ones that are close to the. Still, still going strong.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hmm, yep.
So. Kind of.
Right. And that's all right. We've had, we've had quite the flurry the past decade or so. It's okay to be a little quiet.
I think we're gonna. Find some of these aren't getting filled up as quickly as expected.
Oh, I'm sure.
Although the home real estate market. Is crazy.
Well, it's crazy in terms of price, but I'm not sure it's crazy in terms of volume. You know, it's like you get a high price from a small. You know, a small volume and that the small volume also drives up the price, but that's my impression anyway.
Well, if you put a house on the market right now, which I did last weekend. Um, it doesn't take many people to look at it. It offers.
Yeah, yeah, I believe.
Because of the small volume.
Right, low supply, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. It's a good time to be a seller right now, not a great time to be a buyer.
I can concur on that one. Yeah, my rentals, well, some of them, that one in particular. The value to sell it has gone up so much that I can't charge enough rent. Hmm. To make it.
Yeah.
Make it a decent, you know?
Wow. And so the people who bought it are gonna live in it?
Yeah.
Assuming and not rent it, yeah.
Yeah, they're in a complex and. You know, can afford to buy a home this, I think, at our time finding it and made a very generous offer to make sure they got it. It was smart.
Cool.
Nice.
Anyways, no mail. Uh, one item I put on the agenda. After our vote for the um. Signs. Named by Mister Thomas as what were they? Municipal D M.
A digital municipal information signs.
Um, I think that's got to go to the next step. I guess I'm gonna try to put together a group to work on. Implementing it and I was looking.
But we have to, has the A G approved it yet?
Oh, do we have to wait for that?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not law. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't expect there to be a problem with that one, but.
Right, you could, you could certainly begin your group. Um, it, it'll probably take until.
Till August, really?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. All right, that's good to know. Um, how about advice for how to uh. Get a project like this together and functional and successful since I haven't done before?
Do you want to take this up now or do you want to? Wait until, I don't really care.
Till when?
You had that as a media, uh, an agenda item for eight o'clock.
Oh.
We should wait till eight.
Yep.
You thinking, well, maybe, maybe, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't care.
I mean, if people saw the agenda.
Right, yeah, we should do it. We should do it at eight if it's on there, yeah.
Right.
Okay. I can bring you up to date on the latest. Word from Jane, if you want.
Yes, please.
Let me go find it. So she said, she wrote to Kristen because um of a need to get a, a signature. Um. E E A Planning Assistance Grant Program is now open and accepting applications there due July third. Um. And that's the program that we opted to shoot for rather than the one stop. Um, we are working on the application. I wanted to share a couple of documents with you. One is a draft. Memorandum of Understanding and the other is a draft letter of commitment with the town committing to matching funds of twenty-five percent. So in the letter, um. Twenty-five percent is going to be twelve thousand five hundred. Let me verify that. And so what she's saying is that. Central Mass will lead the preparation and the submission of the E E A Planning Assistance Grant. They'll prepare the application materials to submit by the town at no cost to the town. And if the grant is awarded, activities funded under the grant awards will be undertaken by Central Mass on behalf of the town. And formal contracts would be signed at that time. And. Um, the town of Berlin is eager to see this project reach fruition and has committed twelve thousand five hundred in local matching funds. We appreciate E E A support. That's basically what she's been saying and she's, in the letter, she. Talks about the fact that, and I think we could wordsmith it a little bit. She's um. You know, she said it's been a while since we've done a comprehensive overhaul and I think what we'll do is make certain that it, it's understood that it was. I think nineteen ninety-six was the last time we redid the whole thing back with tainer after the. Solomon Pond Mall was approved and we had that extra money from their mitigation. So that's um the news and so she'll be pushing that forward and get Kristen to sign the letters and then uh. She'll submit the application on our behalf. That's all right with everybody.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Good. That's that news.
Cottage housing or A D Us?
I haven't heard anything in regard to that. Thomas has some exciting news about his visit to Marlboro.
Oh, yeah.
That, yeah, for looking to fill up some dead air between now.
No, 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 that's actually part of the uh, the, the, that's the next gender item is report on Marlboro Solomon Palm, Solomon Pond Mall meeting.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Quite a different vibe of their meetings, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it was uh. I have to say, it was kind, my visit there was uh, in the end, purposeful, but. Sort of a. A, 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 a small train wreck in the sense that I had looked at the agenda and they had um. Marijuana, local marijuana on the bylaw first and the meeting started at seven, so I thought. I, I don't want to go and listen to that, which is probably gonna take, you know, perhaps a while, um. So I left here at about five to seven. I um. I got to Marlboro, uh, probably seven twenty. I was parking in front of the um. I got a parking place right at City Hall and then I went up steps. And I realized I had to enter from the rear for an evening meeting and. Since the couple of operations, I'm very slow at uh. At walking, so, and you had to go down the side of the building and because they had construction fencing, you had to go like. To the end of the block and then around and into the back door. So it was uh. And then when I got in there, uh, you took the elevator to the third floor, which the lobby was almost completely dark. And in the opposite corner was a small flight of stairs and the meeting that they were having was in. In that room. So by the time I got there, it was about probably seven thirty-five, seven forty. And they were in the midst of talking about zoning change. Uh, near the uh, I forget, the, the uh.
What'd you say, Lake?
The pun, yeah, Lake Williams, Williams, that was, that was what I was saying. Williams was on it. I was like, Mark. Uh, anyway, so I sat through that until a little past eight and then. They finished that and they had a break and I spoke to a couple of, uh, it was a joint meeting of. The Planning Board and the City Council and I spoke to a couple of people in the break and learned that uh. You know, they had gone through the first stuff in like ten minutes. Not really very much was done, but I did have a chance to have like a five or seven minute. Conversation during the break. And um, you know, indicated to them, I think it was a reasonable summation of what we had talked about, which was that. You know, in terms of. The overall purposes, we are certainly broadly in agreement and we recognize that that's a valuable property and the uses. Have to change somehow in order to maintain the value for the property owners and the value for the town. Um, they indicated that they were very um. Interested in recreational type. Activities, you know, all the hockey thing, but with other sports, uh, I spoke to them about. The ideas I've expressed before about, you know, a swimming destination. They said that, you know, they looked at places that had. Uh, you know, indoor uh. Facilities for, you know, quite a number even up to, you know, uh, baseball. Well, in, in, in a closed area and that they, you know, they were looking at that. We discussed briefly the fact that. You know, that kind of activity draws people in and is very symbiotic with a food court with some amount of. Retail because people are there for long events and, you know, and. You know, are, are sort of a built-in clientele. Uh, and then the third part of our conversation was that um, because towns are sovereign in New England. Um. You know, we were in a situation, the two towns where, you know, it's like. I want to say I love you, but the words got in the way, you know, which is how do you create? Something, you know, that works intra. You know, from an interim municipal point of view. And I said that um. You know, our feeling was that the two towns needed to talk. To each other about how to coordinate. Um, a focus set of uses within, you know, the current overlay zone. In a way that will allow that. That property to be developed, you know, in an integrated and sensible way going forward. And so, you know, we really had to uh. Uh, get down to it with the two towns to sort of say, well, what, you know. What can we do in that regard? If they want, if it's going to be a recreational things, what are the things we need to change? You know, in the overlay in ways that would be acceptable to Berlin, et cetera. So. That was the, uh, that was the conversation and um, my own feeling is that you had suggested that. Tim and I would attend. I would certainly be willing to reach out. You know, to them and be one of the liaison and we should, uh, we should put it on our agenda. You know. Regularly to uh. Receive reports and, and, and to advise.
Hmm.
But there you are.
Awesome. Well, it's good that it worked out. You probably got more information out of them, talking to them during the break than you would have at an open meeting. Cause my, my experience with going with my parents is. Nobody really talks except for the chair.
Yep. No, I think that's, that's. I got that sense because I sat through some of the. You know, the hearing on the, the zoning change and it was uh. It is very low facility for the public in that room and um, there were. A very small number of immediate neighbors who were talking and that was it, you know, um. It was interesting.
Yeah.
No, it worked, it worked out. I got home and it was, you know, like around eight thirty and Jenny was like, that's amazing. I said, well, you don't want to know.
Well, it's great. Thank you for going.
Uh, what I can do is um, I can prepare. A sort of short written bullet pointed report of what I have just reported orally to the board. And um, you know, have it appended to uh, the minutes for this meeting, okay?
Awesome. That would work great. Thank you.
Okay.
Had they planned another um, meeting or session on?
Um, I did, I don't know, you know, we didn't, we didn't talk about that. We sort of got into. You know, some of the high level stuff and then, you know, he sort of looked at his watch and he was like, you know, I gotta go back because I'm in the middle of a. You know, of another public meeting here. So, but. You know, I can certainly reach out and ask what their next steps are and what the events are and how we can coordinate, okay?
Great.
All right.
So there's no further action that we need to take as a board for this, right?
Uh, I think you'd already suggested, you'd already appointed that Tim and I could liaise, um. And I will liaise in accordance with what we just talked about and as I say, give you a, a short bullet pointed thing to include with the minutes.
Okay. But I mean, beyond that, we don't need to take any action.
I would, no, I don't, I don't think so.
If, if you want, I can reach out to Matt again and just say, hey, you know, we haven't heard from you for a while. See if he wants.
Let's do it.
If he wants to play a card.
Pick at that thread and then see where it goes.
Yeah. Cause he really, he's not said a thing to us from quite some time, so I was a little surprised.
Yeah. No, why don't we, why don't we pick at that thread? Um.
I'll give him a line, a shot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm around, I'm in town like about half the time over the next month or two and uh. Only working in Boston one day a week, so I should have, you know, I should be able to plan. My schedule around seeing somebody even during the day, Tim.
Good, okay.
Great. Thank you.
Do you feel that it was worth the, your time and extra energy?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I mean, I thought it was good. I, I, I was glad I went, I, you know. When he said they'd already done that, I was a little bit chagrined.
Yeah.
And anyway, they're, they're, they're um. Yeah, that, you know, it, it's a. It's less transparent than material we put out and yeah, it, it is, which is not to say in any way, it's, it's perfectly adequate. It's just you have to pay more attention to the nuances of it, you know?
Indeed.
Great. Alrighty. Would you like to? Take up your item, Jay?
Yes. Looking for advice on how to. Put a group together and get this project implemented. Proposed, voted for, I guess not implemented, designed.
So is this committee that you're trying to? Uh, bring together, is it going to tackle both sides or one side?
I think makes sense.
Okay.
Lot in common, right?
So you need to take and wrap in constituents from multiple sides.
Yeah.
Right, well, the school committee probably would be the first place to start. And I'd give them a week or two. They're all busy.
I, I just wonder if you'd want to deal directly with John and. I mean.
Oh, that might be better, yeah.
I, I think John's got a vision. Um, he's had input from parents. It seems like the school committee hasn't participated much in that. Discussion, um. And he's eager.
That, that, yeah, that's an easy way to knock off one of the signs.
Yeah, and then, I mean, I think that'll inform. I mean, I suppose you want them to be somewhat consistent, right? And.
I think so.
Two signs, yeah, definitely, yeah.
I mean, if. If they move forward on theirs more quickly, um. You know, you can, you can get some good design feedback, I would think.
I think there's economies of scale of doing both at the same time.
Right.
Well, certainly financially, if all the money is coming from the town.
What, what's your thought about where you locate in the center? Have you thought more about that?
Are you, are you there yet? Are you there? Are, are, we should be, how do you formulate the body that's going to?
Oh, the reason I ask that is that it seems like you need to involve. Key players in the center. To decide where to put it.
Okay.
Right.
Like, I think one of the Sawyers. Um, the church. It seems like it has to participate. Whether it's, it's Fred from, you know, from the town or I. Fred might, Fred and the police, you know, Goody.
I was gonna get Fred and um, maybe Eric.
Yeah, I mean, Goody's the, the liaison with the town, um. So either he or Eric. The, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. Would be good to come and chat with sometime.
Hmm.
I can let you know when their next meeting's gonna be, but that's Goody. You, Goody usually shows up. It's Eric, it's Police Chief, Fire Chief, Highway. Sometimes, sometimes uh. Anna. Um.
Crane?
Crane comes, because she's the, she's on it. And Mary Porter frequently comes, although she's not a voting member, but I mean, that's. You got, you got some good represent, I mean, that, you don't need to, it just, it gives you a chance to have that audience anyway and they've been thinking about signage in general.
Right.
I'll let you know when they meet next.
Right, you might want to have a better idea, idea of location. Like two or three different spots maybe. Um, and get input from all of those people as to which you should focus on.
Yeah, we're getting close to that. One of the best locations. Is where Blinky used to be.
It'll leave my spot alone. And actually, I don't, I don't totally agree because you're only gonna see it coming from one direction there.
Yeah, people live in town. I'd either go by it twice a day or zero.
I mean, my, my, my feeling is that, that where the lion sign is, is pretty good.
It's not well visible because.
Oh.
Giant bush.
Jay didn't know it was there for twenty years.
The rest of us read it all the time.
Really? There's a, there's a bush that's grown up just outside that uh, office building that blocks it in one direction. It's kind of. It's not an unreasonable choice. I mean, it's.
Right, and, and they might be willing to let you attack the bush with your hedge trimmers.
Maybe. Across the street from that out in front of um, National Lumber, there's kind of a good spot. But there's other signs there.
So that's. Well, and I, I, I am a member of um, the Unitarian Society, which is a component of First Parish Church. I can't speak for them, but. Um. You know, perhaps something in front of the children's church could be, you know, arranged if. There was compensation to the church. There, there might also be people in the church who would be opposed to that, but I don't think it's something you should take off the table.
You say children's church, is that where the parish?
That's the uh, uh, the, well, there's your property and then there's the parsonage. And then there's the uh, the building on the corner behind the parsonage. That's the parsonage and.
Where the thrift store is.
Where the thrift store is, yeah.
You know, if the town, if that's gonna be a town.
I'm not suggesting, I mean, I'm not even suggesting that as a, as a place. I'm just saying that it's not out. that it's not out of the question and these are the things you'd have to address if we were gonna do it.
Yes. I mean, it's important that, that, that someone from the church participate because they own a lot of the prime real estate that you might consider a strong possible candidate.
Who should we get from the church, Thomas?
I can, um, well, I mean, I, you know, uh, let me talk to, to people in the church, but we, yeah, I can get you a name. I, I'm. I have to think about whether it should be me because I'm a, a member of the board too. Um. But let me, uh, let me talk to people, okay?
Mm-hmm. So where Blinky was, there's now a beautiful garden. That whole area looks great.
The, the garden's a little contentious in the commission.
Is it?
Yeah, I thought it, I thought it might be. Now it's see, seeing the, the cast of characters there. Yep.
Yeah. Well, not only that, but AJ was in the process of transitioning it into a native plant garden. And put boatloads of work into it. Certainly last year and, and started the year before. And Walter went in and ripped it all out and put in all cultivars.
It's funny because um. Joni, who had heard it was going to be, you know, native habitat and um. Knows her onions in terms of native habitat and cultivars, that's me. Basically WTF. I mean, it's just, this looks like Mrs. McGinty's garden. It, it's not uh.
Tell, tell her that there are members that agree wholeheartedly with her.
Yep.
There are any native plants that you can.
I mean, it, it looks lovely. It's Miss, Mrs. McGinty's garden, but that's what it is.
Yeah, it looks like Mrs. McGinty's garden. Yes, it does. What were you saying, Jay?
Are there any native species of plants that are in bloom all summer?
There are ones that, that sequentially are in bloom. I don't know if there are ones, most plants don't stay in bloom all summer, so.
Well, the, the annuals usually do, right?
Yeah, annuals, yes.
Yeah.
But.
Yep. Um. Yeah, and but, I, I mean, native plants tend to not be quite as showy anyway. They're harder to buy, so AJ was transplanting them from other places. So they were smaller and it was gonna take a lot more time. Um.
The rhododendrons this year, have you noticed are crazy?
Oh, yeah. No, it's like fireworks. Yeah.
Or a major.
It's, it was a wet spring. Everything is like. Popping. Yeah.
Yep. It's always so amazing. What responds to the weather conditions that year? You know, some years it's this, some years it's that and.
Some years it's everything. And this is one of those years when it's almost everything that uh.
Yeah. Yep.
True.
So you, but. That said, even more reason you're not gonna tear up the garden. Tear up. You're not gonna put a sign there.
Well, it wouldn't be in the way of, of the garden.
And it would be a native sign.
Yeah. I doubt it was. I bet it was imported somewhere from somewhere.
LEDs are made with mostly silicon and that comes from the ground.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
In Berlin.
Basically glass and, like glass, yeah.
Yeah, but it would be constructed negatively anyway.
There you go.
Does someone from the Conservation Commission, should we have one of them per, person people join?
That would be wise.
Put it.
Well, to say, it's like, we're trying to decide that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, now that the garden's done, Walter needs a new project.
There you go.
Walter the garden, okay.
Did he vote for it or against it? Start with that.
Oh, I'm not even sure. I'm not even sure that he voted. Cause it, yeah, cause he wasn't there the second night.
Oh, he wasn't there? I was wondering why he didn't get it up and tell us how we didn't need it.
You know, it's funny because I got there a little bit late. And I saw him leaving as I was pulling in.
The second night?
The second night.
Huh. He did not stay long or go in at all.
No, no. I mean, I think. When, when did, did it start at seven, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I was there probably close to seven thirty, maybe seven twenty-five and um, I saw him leaving. I figured something had pissed him off and he was leaving, but I don't know.
That, that could, both of those things could be true.
Anyway.
There's possibly a site on the other side, you know, beyond Linden Street. Somewhere. Then, kind of where those old, actually, if we knock those old buildings down, we could have a great site for the sign.
Do we know what the status of the reports of those buildings are and any action that may be taken as a result of those?
The status is one of them is a train wreck and the other one's only a partial train wreck.
Okay.
Sure, okay.
But what's gonna happen as a result of that? I, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I just rather.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could probably tell that from driving by. Yeah. I, for being on Selectman uh, for fifteen years, it was one of those perennial things is those buildings uh, steadily deteriorated and uh, there was no real consensus. Or raised demonstrable need that, you know, caused people to pay attention to them.
Yeah. You don't get, you don't get as many people driving by there, but I'm not sure that it's a whole lot less.
Well, I think, you know, I, I, again, I think these are the things you wanna do in the, in the subcommittee, but you know, I think when you look at it. You gotta look at the traffic flows, you know, that if you lose traffic that's going up Linden Street. Or coming from Linden Street, for instance, or coming up South Street and go, you may not wanna put it west of that intersect. But, you know, I mean, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, but those are the things that um. That you need to think about. That, that one is um. By far the most. You know, citing is by far the most of that sign is by far the most complex issue that we have under that bylaw. Absolutely.
Yep.
Right. And you're never gonna get everybody. So, you know, put it. Personally, somewhere in the center of town.
Mm-hmm. Well, we have defined, yeah, we have defined that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hmm. Are we gonna buy a cheap one like Hudson did? Have you seen it yet, Carolyn?
Yeah, every day. I drive past it every day.
Block of, the block of. It's all blinking.
So in the, on one of the sides at the very top, so the LED signs are put together in squares. And that, that size wise is in increments of those squares. I think they're either nine by nine or twelve by twelve. And the very, the one at the very top in the middle. Um, one of the guys that works for us said that that happens when somebody hits it.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Um, and all you have to do is pop it out and pop a new one in. Like, they're very easy to repair. But it, it flat, it blinks it in all the different colors and, oh, yeah, it's lovely. Just makes me love those signs all that much more. Yep. And how long has that sign been up? Maybe two years, maybe?
Probably. There's a big price, a big spread in prices between cheap and expensive.
Have you seen the very, very, very um, high definition one at the building where Montero Electric is?
Yes.
I've been by it, but is, that's good.
He didn't see it just like the lion.
Yeah, right? I'm not so sure.
Seen it. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there was some video playing on it the other day when I went by and just shook my head.
We could play movies on it. They have movie night.
Yeah, I was thinking um, that we could, uh, we could do Celtics games on it for those who don't have cable and people could bring their lawn chairs.
There you go. We could block, we could just block up Central Street on both ends and people can put their lawn chairs across the street.
That's a great traffic calming mechanism too.
Right?
There used to be a drive-in theater. In town, you know.
In Berlin?
Yep.
Really?
I didn't know that.
You bought it? That, and you currently reside at it or?
You know that, you know, the house that used to have all the um. Wooden lawn ornaments and stuff out in front for sale?
Yeah.
On West Street?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just before Coburn Road or, right?
Just after.
Just after, sorry. Yep, yep.
That house was initially built right after the war and they um, were using it for a garage. They were fixing cars. And then it became a um, hot dog stand. And then while I think it was a hot bike stand, they were showing um, movies you could pull in. It's like a drive-in movie theater.
Where were they projected?
Directly towards the west with the, the house next door is the daughters and that wasn't there.
Okay.
It's a big parking lot at the end of it. There was a screen.
Oh.
And as I took the house apart, you know, to rebuild it. It kept getting bigger and then, and they, this Joyce would go one way, then they'd go this way, then it could, she got bigger. And they built a huge porch on the back for the, for the food. Which was on the railroad property. So it encroached, I had to take the whole thing off because it was built on top of the railroad property, that and the workshop.
Uh, see, you could sell hot dogs once the rail trail goes in.
There you go.
About that.
Well, you know, Jay, your, your property has a, a connection to the movie industry.
My current one? I live in.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yes. Uh, Mr. Cottin was married for quite a while to a um, golden age of Hollywood real star named Constance Bennett.
Really?
And so she lived there and they supposedly had pretty wild parties. She um. Move, old movies you might recognize um, were the topper movies, the uh. And uh, she, she did a movie, I just looked her up, What Price Hollywood. Uh, she was a, a supporting actress to Greta Garbo in Greta Garbo's last film. So she was like high level and um. They got divorced partly because, you know, Mr. Cottin, who wanted to live in Boston and, you know, in his country estate. And um, they had wild parties there, but it was not sufficient for Constance Bennett. Uh, in terms of uh, social activity and all of that. And they got divorced.
Wow. Interesting, know that, huh?
Yeah, you should look her, you should look her up, Jay. It's, it's interesting. She was really one of the uh, you know, the golden age of uh. Hollywood mega stars.
Wow. Yeah, Cindy will research that, I'm sure.
That's very cool.
I thought we were only famous for cows.
Right. No, Mr. Cottin was famous for cows. His wife was not terribly amused by them. Anything else? Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Tim.
Uh, if, if, are we done with signs?
Unless you get any other advice.
No, I think you've been given great advice. I'll, I'll update you on two other things quick. One is. Um, the, in regard to traffic counts on River Road. I reached out to the commission and they would do a count. Um. On both legs of the River Road West. One leading to Hudson and one leading to the North Row Town Line, if we would like. Um.
What's that for?
Would just, that would establish a baseline of what's transpiring right now. Um, and then that could be used for comparative purposes later, if you want.
What's that for?
Um, I think that there was a letter to Kristen. Did she share that with us?
I don't remember seeing it.
No, me neither.
Um, she got a letter from a, a resident on River Road. Um, interested in traffic count numbers prior to any activity, which might involve one eighty River Road, but also um. This, the Stevens Family Foundation stuff too. So.
Sure.
It, it might be valuable to have a count um. On that River Road leg leading from the Rotary to Hudson. And then if any of those projects move forward, there'd be a baseline that would be fairly recent. Cause the last counts, I think, are from twenty nineteen. They didn't do a, a lot during COVID. The next time we'd be scheduled to have the regular eight or ten traffic counts would be next year by the commission, but they could do these for us um. Now, if we wanted. And Kristen thought that that would be helpful. So I said I'd mention it here and see what you guys thought.
I think it's a great idea. With, with two potentially large.
Yeah.
Endeavors happening over there. I think it's a great idea.
So I'll move forward on that one. Um, the other one was the. Carolyn, do you wanna bring everybody up to date on the dam?
Sure.
The damn what?
Um. So the dam, Wheeler Pond Dam. So as I think we've talked about, um. Robin Bonazzoli with the help of Interflue, set her, Sarah Winding, I think is her name. Or Whiting, maybe. Um, and Oars. Um. Has secured funding for the pla, to develop the plan to remove. It's not the whole dam. We definitely learned that. It was um, the spillway. And or, and maybe so, so kind of like on either end of the property is what they're looking at. Um, I'm trying to remember. That was like weeks ago.
I mean, the, the thing that I found interesting was that there one, two, three, there were five of butters. I guess that's where we.
I think that's what we came up with, yeah.
And, and because the pond from the assessor's records is not owned by anyone. Um, then we inquired, well, what does that mean? And generally when, when a water body is discontinued, the ownership to the new riverine bound goes to the individuals that are rebutters.
Um, right.
And so one of the things we talked about with these folks from these organizations was, you know, i- is there some interest on the part of the town is, is, you know, to use it recreationally in some way. Um. And I guess Robin Bonazzoli's indicated an interest in not necessarily retaining ownership. Um. Just because the value of the property is fairly limited and. Um, so she might be open to this suggestion. I mean, that, there's the fact that it's a dam from seventeen fifty and that, you know, there were a lot of mills there over the years. It, it was a mill site for two hundred years essentially, so um. And we've got some good. And we've got some good history on it and. You know, that, one of the people that we met with talked about ways in which they, you know, you might develop a small. Park like um, enterprise that, you know, would talk about the history, that sort of thing, similar to what they've done in Northbro along the. The aqueduct section there, you know, where they got some signs that talks about the history. But just, you know, recreationally too. I mean, that Northbrook corridor, the town owns multiple pieces on the Northbrook corridor. And we've continued to look at opportunities to, to retain ownership of, or obtain ownership of other pieces, so. Actually trying to capture this piece um, might be of interest.
Yeah, Tim, I, I, I wonder, um, I mean, one of the, the uh. The ways to deal with it would be to have a Butters gift the property rights to the town. I suspect that would give them, you know, some measure of um, at least tax deduction. Or alternatively, whether we, and I, I could, I could take a quick look at this to, to determine whether. Um, somehow that land under the water now is abandoned and, and whether there would be processes that uh. You know, we, we could achieve uh, to do it. But the, the quickest way might be just to, to talk to the Butters and say.
Yeah.
You know what? We, you, you know, I think particularly if we. Had some money to get at least a, a sort of a fly specked. Understanding of what, you know, the, the, the tax benefits would be. In other words, that it would be deductible or. And so on um. Because, you know, I mean, in the foreseeable future, that land is not going to be usable for anything that you can't use it for. Unless you're wearing waders, you know?
Yeah, it's gonna take some time for.
Yeah.
For it to dry out and.
Yeah.
But it would be, it, it would be amazing if we could make it a park.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what, that's what I would like to see it be.
Yeah.
Um, with, you know, with a nod towards the history of the property and just someplace. Other than South Common.
Yeah. I think that's right, yeah. And I mean, what we can do at this point is, 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 I was saying is to see if we can secure the town's rights to that. It seems to be an ideal time to do it. You know, we, we can probably structure it in ways that benefit. A Butters in the present and um. They're not likely to, to, to benefit from anything in the foreseeable future except paying taxes on more land area, you know?
Right.
Could you uh, seed anything for like a, a, you know, um, something along the lines of a park with CPA money?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think the first thing would probably be to have a conversation with Robin and make sure that.
You know, we're getting ahead of our skis here a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, usually there's, you know, a, 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 a lack of funding that, that takes a good idea and, you know, it just sort of dies on the vine, but.
Right, well, that's the beauty of CPA. This is. An ideal CPA project. It, it could money from historical and open space rec. You know, it, it's so, you know, not that funding. Is limitless, but it's certainly way more than it would ever be otherwise.
Sure, and you could turn it into, I mean, i- i- you know, if you wanted to uh, augment some of the, you know, ideas of. You know, we're looking for a destination and corridor and, you know, um, historic stuff. You could, you know, uh, see a vision where you'd be able to turn that into something along the lines of like the Lowell Canals or, you know, something that. Yep. Draws people to a certain spot.
Sure.
It's, it's gonna be, I think, from a conservation point of view, interesting. Because it's gonna be a zone that's in transition for so many years and.
Right.
And.
Yeah.
An opportunity for, you know, school groups to sort of study land and transition and stuff, you know?
Sure.
Fun spot.
Yeah, and you know, do studies of the species that are there now and.
Yeah.
Um, I guess there is some, one endangered. Species, yes, we're not supposed to say what it is.
Oh, oh, excuse me.
We're not, no, she said, she said, don't, the, the uh, natural heritage likes to keep.
Well, I didn't say that. It was, it was, yeah.
Well, you didn't say exactly what kind, but they like to keep that kinda close to the vest. Um, but there, there is.
Why? Because there are turtle poachers that come to seek, really?
Indeed.
Oh my God.
Really?
Come here to the farm and capture the snapping turtles that keep laying eggs in my fields.
You know the um, the, the outdoor movie site house I was telling you about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were working there and we found a turtle and we felt bad for it. So Caroline took it down and put it in a swamp. And then we found out it's one that lives on land. Travel more than like small distance from where they're born.
There's this, this thing that you keep in your pocket called uh, the internet.
So.
Okay, one, one last West Street turtle story.
One after you.
Okay, well. Uh, when Joni was in France on a painting trip, Hannah and I were gonna go up to uh, Acadia and hike. And she had a study hall the last. Class session of school. So I said, listen, I'll drive you up, get you excused early. We've got a five hour drive. You can do your homework there. And as I'm driving out. To Toronto. Um, I see this snapping turtle in the middle of the road and it was just beyond the swampy area, so. I stopped, put on my flashers. I picked up the snapping turtle and put it in the footwell of. The passenger side of my car, thinking that after I picked up Hannah and we were going back that way, I'd dump it in the swamp and um. So I go to Toronto and I go into the office and they're calling Hannah. And because I was selectmen then, I get buttonholes, you know, and, and to keep out other things and Hannah arrives. And we go out in the car and both of us get in the car. I haven't said anything. And she starts to put her foot into the footwell and she goes, whoa ho. She puts her feet up. She puts her feet up on the dash and said, uh, damn, there's a snapping turtle in the car. I said, oh yeah, yeah, sorry, I forgot. We dropped it off on, on, on the way to Berlin, on our way out to Maine.
That's so funny.
At the Hastings. That, that we found this newspaper article. It, it talked about the fact that he had found this turtle, um, a box turtle and. When he was like in his twenties and he, he carved his initials and the date. Box turtle, which. He's a hundred, he's a hundred years ago.
I know, I know. It still hurts me a little bit, but.
Seventy years later, he finds a box turtle in the field. And it's that turtle.
Oh my God.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
So all he did was maim it.
He.
Identify it.
I, I would say, I would actually say that he did scar it, you know. But people give tattoos to people, you know?
Anyway. Pick out of that, Carolyn.
Yeah, that is, that's fascinating though. Seventy years.
That's great.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
I have a, a turtle observation. Two weekends ago, Glenn and I. Um, kayaked the Asabat. We went in behind DSW down to here over by Hudson High. We did not see one turtle the whole entire time. The river was so high that, that the, the logs, they don't climb out onto the bank. They climb out onto logs in the river and there was other than.
They were all submerged, wow.
They were all submerged.
Wow.
Yep, except for the one tree that I was able to scoot down in my kayak and slide under. But Glenn was not quite so successful.
Oh, oh dear.
And went swimming. Yep, um. But yeah, it was, it was a, it's amazing how different the river is every time you go out.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, when I grew up, my parents had a house that um. Was on the Connecticut River and in April, the river was a quarter mile behind the house.
Wow.
And in August. It was like three quarters of a mile because the whole. Riverfield had uh, had received it, yeah.
Sure, yeah. Yep. Very cool. We live in a great place.
We do. Well, that was. That was great.
Yeah, who knew?
Yeah, um, that can, can, maybe we can distill that into some action items uh, and. Have it on the back of a turtle and deliver it to each other. But what I'm hearing is that the first step is. We'd like to sort of explore the ideas of the town. Uh, in an economical and equitable way for the uh, landowners to acquire. The legal rights that might otherwise accrue to them as a Butters. Right?
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
And uh, and I mean, cause that's the first step, cause we have to uh, somehow secure the rights before we plan anything else.
Right.
Right.
And then um. Secondly, sort of, you know, more discussion about uh. You know, what uh, what the opportunities are. I think um. I think, you know, certainly part of acquiring the rights. Would be to have a sort of a second level description of the possibilities and the benefits of it. Is that fair? And we've talked about. Those a bit tonight.
Sure.
I would be willing to write up the acquiring section. Does anybody want to? Take on, you know, a, a, just a brief, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, more than half page long and a few bullet points. About uh, next steps on that side, sort of demonstrating the benefits and. Uses.
I, I'm happy to do that with Carolyn if she wants to sit down sometime and brainstorm.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, and I think those, you know, I mean, any steps beyond that are, you know. Exploring alternate realities and we, you know. We don't need to do that tonight.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, once we get, once I think Robin gets a little further along in the process. We can approach her about her intentions um. I, I think it's premature at this point. But um.
So you wanna stage this and wait, wait until she has her final plan? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, and let her, let it, I don't think it's premature to let her know that we are still interested. Um, you know, and, you know, she needs to do what she needs to do. Because what we're not interested in is doing anything, is acquiring the land before the um, risk has been.
Oh, no, I think totally, totally, that's what we were talking about because, yes, absolutely. The, the sort of resultant land that will. You know, follow from their getting rid of the dam, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, and you, Carolyn, your sense is this is, you know, five, six years, that sort of thing?
It, it, I think so.
Yeah.
I think that would probably be reasonable, um, but it gives us plenty of time to plan and, you know, come up with. Get an understanding of how other towns have transitioned properties like this into public space and, you know. It, it's, you know, it's certainly gonna take some planning. To figure out how to get it to where we want it to be. So.
Great.
Yeah, it's very exciting though.
Yeah, it is.
Well, this group that is coming together with Orr is um, it, it's pretty impressive, the. The woman that. Well, she came here to the house and we chatted for quite a while. She's chatted with Walter. But she's interested in the history of the site and. The, the layers of um, talent that they bring to bear on the issue is pretty thorough. I was impressed.
Yeah, Robin's done a great job, really. It, she had some um. Difficulties securing sole control over the property. Um, and so there was definitely some. Some times where, you know. We would get multiple offers of. Receiving the land from multiple people. So they've, you know, they've definitely offered to donate the land probably five or six times at least. So I, I feel comfortable saying that. To the best of my knowledge, that is still her intention. And she stated that was her intention even at. After she became the sole, sole controller of the property and. Um, I think the first time we met with Interflue. Um, she was s- still saying that she wanted to do this, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Alrighty. I'd make a motion to adjourn then.
Prior to that.
Oh, sorry.
Our next meeting is July tenth, twenty twenty one. Which is the second Tuesday of the month.
Yep.
Everybody in agreement?
Uh, July, no, July ninth. Tenth is Wednesday.
Right, I'm sorry, I did Wednesday, yep, nine.
And will that be our only meeting in July?
Usually.
Okay.
Me and July, one meeting in August.
In August, I have the first meeting that I have is the thirteenth.
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna delete the other two.
Alrighty.
Okay, now you can make your motion, Thomas.
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, non-debatable. I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
JT.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all.